All right, I believe everyone is here. We will open the regular meeting of the Lake Lor Town Council, December 8th, 2020, which is being held electronically via Zoom. I'd like to ask the commissioners, please, to state their names so that we can ascertain that you are here for a quorum.
John Moore is here.
Commissioner Patrick Bryant, present.
Mr. Diorio, present.
Mr. Kilby, present.
Thank you very much. We will, having had an opportunity to review the agenda, do I have a motion to accept it? Or are there any edits?
I've heard no changes. I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Go your second.
Commissioner Bryant will second the motion.
Will you each state your vote, please?
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Patrick Bryant, aye.
Kilby, aye. I think that came in.
Thank you. Then the agenda is approved as written. We'll move on to the town manager communication, Mr. Baldwin.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I want to hit some highlights in the report. Next week, we have a meeting with the Withers Rabinell engineer, who is working on the Firefly Co. water booster pump final design. And so we think we got that at a place where we really can move forward with that. So just wanted to report that. The street paving that was scheduled has been completed. When I say scheduled, it was those streets that were scheduled to be paved, repaved in 2021. So all that work is done. Personnel, they're extremely busy reading water meters each month. We ran the counts on that and they basically are using about $35,000 a year in time doing meter reading, since we are reading once a month. We have a possible solution for that as we, as we talk about budget this, this next year. La Bella, I'll defer to Commissioner Diorio on that, but we still are working on the E R E I D and the S O C. Those have been submitted. They're being refined. As you guys know, we adopted the Phase One area map. And so we're, we're moving forward with, with that. Community Development Department is down one full-time employee. And so interviews are being conducted for that. We're hoping to find someone that can get in there and help Mitchell. Mitchell is drowning. So we're trying to get someone in that can help him. One possible solution would be that we could turn to Isothermal Development Commission and see if they could offer support to Mitchell on a contractual basis. And we will have some revenue that we're not using for the salary of the person, but which was Garrett Murphy, who resigned to be closer to family in Greenville. So we're working on that. Fire Department, last month, I see the chief is here, but they had 30 calls. That's right at average, one call a day. So you can see there, we're extremely busy in November. So we appreciate those guys keeping us safe. Police Department, the mayor may have some things to say about this, but they had basically a toy drive in conjunction with L L C A that Laura Creji helped organize. And that just added a lot of, what's a good word? Just a lot of positive feedback for the officers doing something good at a time when law enforcement across the country is not being looked at in a positive manner. But just as a law enforcement officer, being able to do something like that was a boost to those guys and appreciate their willingness to do that and, and participate in that, in that process. Sam continues to stay on top of the finances. We did take a look at the, Sam was reviewing the contract with Chimera Rock Village. And for a number of years, we had kept the rates the same in that agreement. And so Sam has made a recommendation as we go through the budget process that we give serious consideration to maybe revisiting those fees in the future at the appropriate time when that contract comes up for, for review. Dammit Hydro gave you the good news on that. Last month, $75,000 plus. That's a victory for all the work that has been done in Hydro to bring what was an operation that had really kind of ground to a halt on multiple fronts. Pin stock, butterfly valves, a small generator. It goes on and on and on. And the town has turned that around. I think that is a success story that we need to share with our community so that they know that we finally are there. It's not perfect. Dean Lindsay would tell you that we still have some work to do. He is still establishing standard operating procedures and putting things in place that need to be put in place. And there's some additional work that needs to be done down there to even increase efficiency. So, but we've made huge progress in that particular area. Laura, as you know, continues to stay busy. We're still awaiting the award letter. Another term for that would be a signed contract with FEMA for the design for the reservoir drain, which is part of our sewer project, but also allows us to hit a checkbox for dam safety relative to the dam. So we're still waiting to hear back from those guys. And she also is working on a grant to help us with the construction piece. We've hit a little bit of a snag there in that we were pursuing one grant. We received word from those folks that perhaps we shouldn't have been pursuing that particular grant, but she is making adjustments. And so we continue to, to move, move along in that area. We just had a conversation about that just before we started this meeting, but Laura is working hard on that. Last, Parks and Rec, as you guys know, we reported before, Dana Bradley is pursuing her basic law enforcement training certificate. And she's, she's at the top of her class, both in the physical fitness as well as her academic scores. We're, we're pleased that Dana is with us. She's making tremendous progress and she continues to grow and learn and basically become our new Dean Givens over time. Those are big shoes to feel. But Dana is, is certainly bright. She's a, she's a learner. She's eager. So we continue to really find a lot of joy in watching her grow. That kind of sums up November's activities. There are a few other things on here we may get into. I think the last thing I probably would want to go over is we're going to have our workshop on the, on the 16th, which is next Tuesday. Next Wednesday, I believe it is, 16th. So that's really just meant to be conversational. We're going to get into some numbers, but as you guys know, I've been surveying you guys about direction setting. And in the beginning, I feel like it's important that we, if we get our direction set correctly, we get some goals out early, then we'll know then how to play against that when we start looking at numbers. So when we start to have those conversations with department heads and they understand what direction council would like to go in, it makes it easier on them. They're not guessing at the things that they feel like they should ask for or request. So right out of the chute, we'll take a look at some of the goals and things that both council and staff have talked about and have made known. But also Sam's going to give us a little bit of update on where things are currently in our current budget and maybe even a little bit of insight on, on forecast for revenues and those types of things. But all that is very preliminary. So when we start talking about numbers next week, just keep in mind that all that is extremely soft. We're just barely halfway through, not quite halfway through this fiscal year. So we have a long way to go before we finalize any numbers. But now is the time for us to have that conversation about priorities and values and goals as we move into the budget development process. You guys adopted a calendar, so we will stick with that calendar. Those dates, we'll continue to, to bring those up. And there's different entities having different activities they need to carry out in order for us to bring this budget development process together. That having been said, I'll be glad to entertain any questions you may have about anything that's been said thus far. I know we got reports from council members and some of the things I've talked about lightly, I know will be talked about in detail, but I'll, I'll happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Baldwin, the commissioners, or anyone else? If not, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. We will move on then to number five on our agenda. The council liaison reports and comments. We'll begin with Commissioner Diorio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Utility Advisory Board has been very busy, meeting more than once a month on a regular basis and also interfacing with the Weekly Engineers Group, which is getting together to push forward with the state, the engineering report. So there are several things moving in parallel. First thing I'd like to report is that the tempo of moving forward on the sewer system is really, at this point, being driven by the, the state of North Carolina. There's nothing that La Bella Engineering or the town is doing to hold up that process. And, but we are responding to a series of questions that's coming from the state to, to move forward. And those things are specifically the funding and the approval of the reservoir drain valve, which is, has to be done before we even consider going into a contracting phase for Phase One of the sewer system. And that resides with state of North Carolina dam safety. Good news is the funding, they've notified us that the funding is there, but there is an amount of paperwork and a process that's very bureaucratic in order to get that done. So the tempo for that, and when we actually get approval, that's with the state. We have nothing to do with that. So we're simply responding to that. So there are several things in series that have to occur before we try to get to Phase One construction in the next winter cycle. Right now, we don't know if we're going to meet that schedule because we're not driving the schedule, but we're doing the best we can to get all those different elements in place. The second thing is the engineering report, where Department Environmental Quality is asking some very good questions, causing La Bella in particular to respond with answers, even to the point where La Bella has started to do design because the state of North Carolina folks want to see a typical section, really, of, of the sewer system in design, which is a little unusual for an engineering report, but it's so different for the state, our, our system, that they want to see that. So La Bella is aggressively doing that. And we're also working the special order of consent, which is how we're going to manage our wastewater treatment plan while all this is going on. And we have not received the final word on what the limits will be for our system because that'll drive how we operate our system going forward. But we, we think that that will be forthcoming. The Utility Advisory Board piece, working on the policy of how to interface with the residents of Lake Lor once we get, secure the funding and the construction of the sewer system. And so that policy is going to be absolutely crucial, a crucial piece in order to determine who, what, when, and how, and how much, actually, the, the folks of Lake Lor are going to have to invest in order to hook into the system once it comes by their property. That, that, that effort is going very well and it'll be ready within a month. With that piece, there's additional engineering study and analysis that'll be done when the lake is drawn down in January to, to get a preliminary insight into where the sewer system is going to go and where the stub outs are going to go. That'll be combined with the policy brought to the town council. And those two pieces together will give us pretty much all the information we need to develop a package that'll be handed off to those that are in Phase One to get their view and their perspective on how this should happen. And all that'll be brought together in the spring. Laura Creji has a, has, has a framework of what that letter will be to the residents, but it needs the detail, engineering detail, engineering analysis and the policy in order to make that package complete. So all that will come together to town council, probably in the February meeting. We'll get all that together, working with Laura and the town manager to get all that information out to the folks in Lake Lor. And then our work really begins because then the residents will understand exactly what we're, what we're up against. And some decisions will have to be made as we move forward. So all that is going in parallel. It's really on track. What we don't know is if we can get all the contracting and actual construction, preliminary construction done prior to next winter cycle. We'll know that answer probably in the February, March timeframe as well. Matter of fact, I think we probably need to know if we're going to be drawing down next winter because we really don't want to send packages out, I don't think, to the Phase One residents without knowing for sure that we're going to be working on the next winter cycle. So we should know that answer when, when this all culminates in, in the spring. And subject to your questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Diorio. Any questions for Commissioner Diorio? Then we'll move to Commissioner Kilby.
L A B had their monthly meeting yesterday. Primarily, most of the discussion was on the commercial lake fees and all. And as you know, recommendations made to Marine Commission in our primary meeting at four o'clock today, and that was taken care of. As from ABC standpoint, ABC Board had their first meeting in several, in a number of months by Zoom about three weeks ago. Had some challenges, but we've made it through that. And so we have another one scheduled coming up here soon. The ABC store continues to operate, drive up only. That's kind of at the request of the staff there. So that seems to be working well with, with the ABC store operation. So that's my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Commissioner Kilby? Then Commissioner Moore, do you have a report from your boards?
Yes, the zoning and planning board met on Tuesday, November 17th, and reviewed a request for a conditional use permit. There's a family that wants to add a garage apartment to their home. And the, the request was not approved in the, the way they submitted it, but the town staff had proposed two alternatives and approval was given pending the applicant using one of those, one of those methods that town staff had recommended. So, and I just have heard that that's continuing to move along. There was a, there was a discussion about some of the requirements by the, about state, you know, pertaining to our, the way some of our ordinances are worded. And there, and Mitchell is still working on that. One thing that was brought to our attention was that we may need to change some of the terminology in our vacation rental ordinance. Nothing that really, I could see they changed the way we are doing business, but mostly just changing some terminology. And let's see, the, um. So you had a note here that Garrett Murphy is leaving, but we've already talked about that on the town manager's report. And Mr. Anderson, who's doing the community development work, or acts as our community development director, has also been doing a lot of work with the town with our respect to the tech support and working to enter, to find a secure, a more secure provider and stronger internet connection. There was also a discussion of some of the sedimentation issue from the Highlands that was getting into the lake. And the staff has received plans for revisions from old engineering under the, for the upper slope to repair some of the failures in the upper slope. And that's an ongoing, that's an ongoing issue there. So that's it for zoning and planning for last month.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Moore. Are there any questions for Commissioner Moore on zoning and planning? Well, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to Commissioner Bryant, Parks and Recs.
Thank you. And Lake Structures Appeal Board as well. So I'll kind of cover both of those. Lake Board of Adjustment and Structures Appeals will be a little easier. I'll start there, if I may. The conditional use permit that Commissioner Moore was talking about for the family dwelling for Mr. Skandora at Gentle Woods Lane, still in deliberation. There were some good recommendations made by Z N P. And, but you do have several residents in that area who certainly have definitive opinions about, about that process and also, of course, looking within the town ordinances and constraints based on that property. There is a historic structure there that's the original cabin. And the new possible garage apartment is much larger and taller than the original structure. So he will be coming back, I would probably say, within two months or so, back to Board of Adjustment and probably zoning and planning to rediscuss that. There was also a variance request for William and Jill Jones at Sunset Cove Road. That one was taken care of and passed through. And that took care of that piece. So this, this one area, Gentle Woods Lane, is probably going to be one of the more in-depth conversations that Lake Structures Appeals Board and Board of Adjustment has had since I took over as the liaison there. So should be interesting to see how that plays out in conjunction with zoning and planning board. So that covers those two. We'll see if we have any requests that come through for next month's meeting, whether or not we need those. So moving on to Lake Parks and Recreation Board meeting, met on December the 3rd. This was via Zoom. It was a very productive call. And we did have a couple people that joined, joined us a little bit later after we started, but we did have everyone there. So it worked out very well for us. I would like to reverse back to November, Parks and Recreation Board meeting. I failed to mention in November about the fundraiser that the Flowering Bridge did. Moby and several volunteers and artists in the gorge raised over $2,500 for the Lake Lor Flowering Bridge, doing an art sale there out on the bridge and helped raise a lot of great funds for the Flowering Bridge, especially in the middle of this pandemic. So I wanted to thank all of the volunteers there for their efforts to help raise money for the bridge, especially coming into the holiday season. Christmas lights are an investment, as I know full and well. So it definitely helps to give their budget a nice boost for, for the holiday season. As we were going through Parks and Rec, we did discuss the Zoom meeting, roll call, and the new executive order for those pieces. And we also had a discussion about filling vacancies for two board members rotating off. We'll be talking about that in short order further on the agenda. So I'll leave that to be for now. So Mrs. Bradley reviewed our full report. We had an ongoing inquiry about number of available slips at the marina. And currently, there are 19 that are available at the end of this year. So with that brand new marina, we had, you know, essentially an 85 to 90% pickup on the boat slips there, which is perfect to help finance that project in full without tax dollars, which is great. So 122 volunteer hours during the month of November. Ms. Bradley has done an incredible job soliciting and securing volunteers for assistance on our trail system, which is just incredible. She's done a fabulous job there. Question came up about Chimera Rock State Park meeting with the downtown plan. There have been some small stakeholder meetings, but I did tell them that that project is likely to, to be a little ways down the road. So we will, I'll keep Parks and Rec informed on it as I know more. So all of our trail systems are doing fairly well. We do, coming into wintertime, and as you know, we've had a lot of trees that have come down. So they have been on a lot of work with that piece. Over 20 trees fell down at Weed Patch Mountain Trails, but the trails themselves look very good. We are having a little bit of vandalism up there because it is sort of a more rural trail system. And so they are fixing those as, as well as they can. But we are trying to keep an eye on that. So there's workday scheduled for some of the other trail systems too. So over 1,500 people used the trail at Dipper Watts for November. And October was about the same as well. So the fall leaves and tourism has definitely given us a huge boost here. So, and another five trees were needed there. So the Flowering Bridge had a counter of 11,900 for November, which is incredible. They had another vandalism account for one of the donation boxes. And there are new additional cameras with Wi-Fi connectivity. And Mr. Massey did note that mask wearing on the bridge has had a very high retention rate. People being very mindful of the executive order and the use of masks on the bridge, which has been really good. So the auction and the money that they raised in November with Ms. Bay and the volunteers' efforts made a great deal of difference for them. So the photos are on Facebook for the vandals, but nothing has come yet. So the public golf course, Mr. Minnick was not present for that, so do not have a report for the golf course at this time. We do want to thank Melody Potter and Carl Landrum and their team for getting all of our Christmas and holiday up and give us a little festive look. There's still been a lot of traffic in the park and the gazebo. So the Boys' Road, Boys' Camp Road Park Planning, the grants have not come through, as you read in your packet. We did have a request from Ms. Bay if there was a contingency plan about using that possibility for tent campers or kayakers from River Access. Ms. Bradley is town employee. It's a discussion could take place and we may approach the topic with Mr. Givens. The Rumbles scheduled to come up in February. And they're considering a virtual boulder climb, but they may come for a request for tent service, either in Morse Park Meadows or Boys' Camp Road. So Mr. Dan Bragdon with Parks Programs and Initiatives is still looking about an intern piece. And we're still trying to look at legal information about using interns for town services and develop a job description. So he is still kind of spearheading some of that and looking at those pieces. So there was some discussion about the river levels and how those are used as Mr. Lindsay has done an incredible job with the dam and creating a more consistent water release schedule that has also increased revenues. Mr. Bragdon thinks that we may be able to offer some downstream opportunities for businesses to offer some river access below the dam if we know what the schedule is. So that may swing back around to somewhere with U A B and town staff a little bit later. So I gave them some updates about the Phase One portion of the sewer system. The amphitheater has regrown its grass and looks really, very good there. So also give them a quick update about internet use providers for future use in town. And we'll be looking at some of those for a little bit later piece. So, and the mayor had a couple of pieces about COVID that we provided. And Mrs. Creji gave us some, thank you for all the Veterans Day events. So we adjourned the meeting and we're meeting again next month, as right now. And that is all.
That was a good meeting. Any, any questions for either of those boards or Commissioner Bryant? Then thank you so much. I think that is the completion of our council liaison reports. We'll move to our public comment. The public is invited to speak via Zoom. If you're joined us during, via Zoom, on any non-agenda or consent agenda topics, your comment should be limited to less than five minutes. Mitchell, do we have anyone who has joined us? Then I think we'll just move on to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
As Commissioner Diorio, I recommend we approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Bryant, I will second.
Would you please each cast your vote?
Commissioner Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Bryant, aye.
And the consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Having no unfinished business, we'll move on to our new business. Our first item to discuss is the July 4th fireworks request from Rumbling Bald. I will defer to you, Mr. Baldwin, on that one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Laura Creji is here and she'll speak to that issue. Laura? Is Laura with us, Mitchell? I'll go ahead, Madam Mayor. In your packet, you have a memo from our events coordinator where she explains that she met with the... fire chief and police chief to discuss having fireworks in Rumbling Bald at the same time that fireworks are taking place on this side of the lake. I think at this time, the bottom line was that they did not want to give a recommendation. They wanted to wait a little later to see how COVID affects gatherings. And they would like to maybe give a recommendation at a later date. I would say that fire department is having to be at two places at once. If we have fireworks on both sides of the lake to ensure safety, also PD is responsible for keeping folks safe as well. If we have those fireworks on two separate dates, then we can stagger as we usually do. But having those simultaneously could present a challenge. They, no one said no, but they did say that that they wanted to to wait on a recommendation as we get closer to that date. I do think that it's going to be important that we try to get an answer one way or another so that RBR can do planning in appropriate fashion. So that having been said, I don't see where there's a recommendation for a motion presented to council by communication specialists. I think it was just meant to be a report. So I think that's all we have on that.
Well, thank you for that discussion. Are there any questions for Mr. Baldwin? And thank you. We'll move on to discuss the replacing of the fence at the Public Works Facility site, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We just wanted to present you with some pictures. David Airwood is on vacation this week. David has been out. He's inspected the fence. We actually did ask a contractor to come out and give us a couple of different proposals for fencing, replacing the fencing that's out there. And one, both of those were complete replacements. One was wooden, like for like as to what we have out there right now. That was a significant amount of money. The other was to go back with a chain link type fence, but also have the black mesh that would be basically cramped to the outside to soften the appearance and keep it looking so so institutional. As you can see, the fence itself, there are six by six posts that basically serve as the anchoring for the fencing. And those, a lot of those six by sixes are rotten at the ground. Mr. Airwood reported that some sections of this fence have been in there for 40 years. A little surprised at that age, but but the the fence is in desperate need of repair. I think all we were trying to do at this point is to generate some conversation with council. This is not something that we have in the budget. We would have to dip into fund balance in order to make the kind of repair. But it is definitely in need of 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 repair. The two types of estimates that we received, one was like for like wood and the other was chain link galvanized with a black mesh basically connected to the outside to soften it. I think a third option would be just the black chain link polymer with some landscaping and maybe some sort of extra mesh or slats that would go down in the fencing to 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 screen it. It's a situation where we have to have it. It's where we store materials, those guys, you can't keep a public works yard looking pristine. That's why the screening is there. We also need to make sure that that you know, folks can't can't drive necessarily in and out of that site. We recently have put up gates. So all this is for security. It's also for aesthetics. It's also to allow us to do what we need to do. If you don't have the fencing, if you don't have the screening, you constantly have folks looking at a public works yard. And having been in the business for a little while, I can tell you that community will go by an unscreened area that the town is keeping and they'll demand that you screen it or clean it up or do something with it. So I would recommend that if we, whatever type of fence that we go back with is something that screens what takes place on the inside so that folks can can drive by and not see it as an aesthetic nuisance. So with that having been said, I'm more than happy to let the board give us some input as to what direction you'd like for us to go in relative to this matter.
Were you going to go ahead and get, were they going to get estimates for the three different, for the wood, the chain link with the mesh or the black chain link?
We did for the wood and the chain link. The wood was twice as much. I think we were looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of 80,000. The 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 chain link was in the neighborhood of 40 and some change. It was about half the amount. The third option, we did not get a bid on or a cost estimate. We just did that just to give us some idea as to what kind of numbers we're going to be looking at. But that third option also may be something we want to consider as well.
Shannon, it looks pretty deplorable now to everyone, I'm sure. So when we're, when we're rethinking, we might want to do this, this winter in the spring?
I think as soon as possible is what we would like to do. If that is what the board wants us to do. Again, we don't have the money money in our budget. We'd have to come ask for money to be taken out of fund balance. So that's that's kind of where we are. The winds we've had just basically kicked some of the posts over and that dropped the fence.
Shannon, can I ask you a question, Commissioner Kilby?
Yes, sir.
In our future plans, and you'll just have to refresh my memory. I know we have had discussions about moving Public Works to another location. Was the, was there a timeline on that that we were thinking?
Nothing hard at all, but it is something that it was, they're dominoes. One is that if we find ourselves staring at a a solid downtown plan for Chimera Rock State Park, that we then would then really get serious about establishing some dates. And as you guys know, that's been talked about, it's been talked about since I've been here. And so that's been well over a decade going on too. But we don't have a hard date. And I would say that if we were to put up fencing, it would be wise for us to use fencing that if we needed to take down and reuse, that we could do that. If you put up wooden fencing, you're not going to be able to reuse it.
That was my reason for asking the timeline. I I think it would be, you know, we would not be very prudent if we prudent if we did not put something there that could be moved if the if the if the time came for for it to be moved.
And our chain link options are going to be roughly half the cost of what the wooden would be.
Right.
So you can see, we can get a reduce costs and have something that's possibly reused if we were to to move the facility. I think landscaping and things on the outside, we can soften the chain link appearance.
Having been a resident there now for about three months, there's not a lot of traffic, but there is some traffic. And you know, there's, there's only three houses that are up that up Keeter Road, Keeter Lane there that goes up. There's only three houses, but there are is some traffic. People just say, oh, let's drive up through there and see what that looks like, you know. So there is some traffic, but it definitely something that, you know, needs to be replaced, I think.
Manager Baldwin, I wondered too, in regards to the black, you know, the town uses in the town master plan and the old Arnett Muldro, burgundy and hunter greens were also color schemes that were used in there. Do they offer other screening options for the fence that may soften it a little bit by by way of color versus the black?
I don't know that as a fact, but I my guess is yes. I think the green and the black may be the two that you probably can get. And so we certainly will take a look at that if that's what the board would like to do. Great idea.
Just it softens a little bit, especially in season with, you know, our lush green forest. So maybe have blended a little more and save a little on the landscaping side of things.
Questions of Mr. Baldwin about replacing the fence?
Any direction you'd like to give?
I'm with Mr. Bryant. I'm with Commissioner Kilby. I think chain link's definitely the way to go, both from a call savings perspective and the ability to move it should we need to. So.
Shannon, another question from, I know you and I looked at some maps one day. Would this fence go back exactly the same place that it is now to stay on the property lines?
Yes, sir. I think what we would need to do is have that property surveyed to make sure that fence stays within our domain.
I agree.
There are some adjoining properties that are owned by the Moore family. And seemingly sometimes our guys don't know where that line is. And so they push something over and they get a phone call and they have to bring it back. And then just clearly knowing where they can operate day to day, I think is optimal. So having that survey and having a fence basically cited so that you know it's it's on our property just just keeps us from having any tension or any any concerns moving forward.
Well, I would propose that the first thing we should do is is get bids on on getting that survey done. And I think we should, that should be the first step, is making sure we know exactly where the fence needs to go. Then we'll know exactly how much fence we need. And then we can get accurate bids on when we know what the location is. I don't know what what the process is, what we need to do, but I think we should get the ball rolling. If 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 everybody else thinks that's not what needs to be done and getting the getting the survey taken care of.
Seemingly consensus is having it surveyed and getting a couple of options on chain link and mesh to make sure to ensure that it screens, but also softens the look of the chain link. So I think we've got some, I think we've got some direction here that we can move in. And we'll get those estimates and bring those back to you, possibly with a a budget amendment that will allow us to take some money out of fund balance to pull the trigger on this and keep it in mind that this is fencing that we can reuse should we decide to 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 move our facility at some point in time.
That sounds good. Any more observations, input, questions? Then we'll go with that planned and we will move on to C, which is the adoption of the 2021 calendar events. And Mr. Baldwin, I think as Laura's not here, can you take this one?
Sure. So what we've asked Laura to do is for to submit to town council a calendar of events that we know we can anticipate, can use as a guide. Her time is precious and knowing where she's going to work, how she's going to work is critical. So what you have is a is basically a calendar of events in your packet. And then also as part of our review, we're asking you to adopt the calendar events, but also recognize that Laura would only be involved in four particular items as far as leading the organization of, and that's the four that appear before you right here. When folks come to the town about other events, Laura will be the go to. But in that case, she would be able to just steer them and guide them where they need to go with other staff personnel to get permits approved, get other things approved. But she would not be leading in the organization of these events. We're finding that she loves events. She's extremely good at that, but we have to help her set some framework in place to help her manage her 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 time. So these four events, we're asking you to to adopt these four events that you see in this agenda item request form as well as the calendar events that are attached.
Shannon, question. Oh, go ahead, Laura.
I I just wanted to say I was here if if you need me. I have been on another line.
Sorry. So didn't mean to speak for you, Laura. If I've said anything you need to correct, please do. Was filling in for you. Did I say everything correctly?
Well, I I just caught the the last part of that and I'm sure it was all fine.
Well, let me just just repeat for clarity now that you're you're hearing it. So we're asking council to adopt the calendar of events for next year, next calendar year. And then also recognize the four events that you would be leading and organizing. And keep it in mind that those would be the only four that you would be leading and organizing. If folks come to you relative to the other events, you're just going to help direct them as to where they need to go to get the permits, the resources they need to get things done that need to get done. So is that? Is that what you had in mind?
I think that's that's what you and I have have discussed.
Yes.
Okay, then in that case, do I hear a motion to adopt the 2021 calendar of this?
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion that we adopt the calendar events with the position of one, I'm number one, these four events will be spearheaded by the Town of Lake Lourdes. The other events that are listed on the annual events calendar will be in partnership with either private enterprise or local organizations with support of advertising from the town, but not spearheaded by the Town of Lake Lourdes.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I can second that. More?
All right. Would you please each of you state your vote?
Bryant, I.
More, I. Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
Then that motion to adopt the 2021 calendar of events passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. I will move on then to our last item of business on new business, which is board member appointments. And I think perhaps the easiest way to do this is just to start with each liaison and let them speak to their own board. So the first one in the packet is ABC. So Commissioner Kilby, if you want to address that?
Yes, ABC Board. Peter O'Leary is serving as a regular member and he replaced a member that that was is deceased. So he would be my recommendation, the person that we appoint to fill the that term.
And you have only one opening, correct?
I have only one opening. That's correct.
All right.
Got a motion?
I make that in form of a motion.
I'll second that. More will second.
All right. Could I hear a vote? Please state your name.
Kilby, I.
I. Diorio, I.
Bryant, I.
All right then. I think Mr. Peter O'Leary has been appointed as the permanent member to the ABC Board. And we congratulate him. All right. We will then move on to one second. The Board of Adjustment. And we have three opportunities there.
Yes, that is correct.
Would you like to speak to those, Commissioner Bryant?
Yes. And then what we have, and so we have three opportunities. We also have one permanent and then an alternate that we also need to to bring in as well. So be just a second. I need to rotate forward just a little bit to one of the other boards to make sure that I've got my ducks in a row. Because I think somebody is shifting gears from one board to another. So I do want to make sure that I note that correctly before I go on record for that. Okay. So Neil Al in Melvin seeking reappointment. Neil Gurney, I'll join her in Melvin Owensby. We'd also like to have Greg Gardner, who is currently an alternate, go in as a permanent member of the Board of Adjustment. Greg Gardner is currently an alternate on that board. And Julia Ross, also known as Betty Ross, had applied for a position there as well. And I think she could be a great alternate for the Board of Adjustment and Lake Structures Appeals Board. So Mr. Gurney, Mr. Joyner and Mr. Owensby. Greg Gardner would become a permanent and Mrs. Betty Ross would become an alternate for the Board of Adjustment and Lake Structures Appeals Board.
All right. Is there any, are there any questions? Our our discussion on those recommendations from the board or do I hear? Or do I hear a motion to accept those appointments?
Well, one thing we need to note is that Bill Bay, if, if we appoint him, as we're anticipating appointing him to another board, he will be dropping off. So that's the extra, that's the extra slot for the, for a regular member.
For Mr. Gardner, that's correct.
Right.
Greg Gardner would take Bill Bay's place pending approval of Mr. Bay moving to a, a new board.
I'll make a motion that, Patrick, why don't you make a motion as sure?
Yeah, so the motion is to, for reappointment, Mr. Neil Gurney, Mr. Al Joyner, Mr. Melvin Owensby will remain. Mr. Greg Gardner would become a permanent pending Mr. Bill Bay's moving to a new board. Should Mr. Bay not be appointed to the other board, Greg Gardner could remain an alternate. Mrs. Betty Ross would become an alternate when Greg would become a permanent member of that board.
Kind of a domino, none of the motion there, right?
Madam Mayor, I have a suggestion. Why don't we come back and do the vote on this after, why don't we go to discuss Bill Bay's transfer? Get that settled and then come back instead of.
I agree with that.
The domino effect there. I agree, Commissioner. Thank you.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Patrick, do you, do you have, as long as we have you up sort of, is there anything for Lake Parks and Recs that you wanted to do?
Yes, so we do have some adjustments there. So I would first like to take an opportunity to provide a resounding thank you to two members of this board who have been longstanding members and have provided a tremendous amount of support to our community over the years. Mr. Martin Watts and Mr. Delminic are both rotating off of the Parks and Rec Board. And they have had quite a great deal of involvement and a ton of hard work for, for the town and for this board and in general in the community for many years. And I wanted to recognize their, their specific contributions for, for us there. They've been great members of the board, but we have some very good applications that have come through. So, so strong board and it's, it's, it's keeping a resounding, resounding, good piece of infrastructure for us. So candidates certainly seeking reappointment, Mr. Kajowski, Mr. Ed Ditmer. Mr. Dan Bragden is currently an alternate member, but has provided a tremendous amount of input for us in meetings over the last few months. And I'm recommending that Mr. Bragden become permanent member of the board. And then we have two other applicants. The Parks and Recreation Board did look through these as well and did take a poll. And Mr. Walters, who is our chairman, did provide their recommendations. It was pretty resounding. Robin Worchester, who is one of the applications you have, is the first one, will be a permanent member. He was recommended for his strong contributions for being the trail boss at some of our trails, but also because he's working with Mrs. Bradley very closely in looking at water quality samples and such. And he's, has the time and efforts to invest in several things regarding the trail system. And I think could be a great asset for us in a volunteer perspective there. And then Mark Hope would become an alternate replacing Mr. Bragden. So the motion is reappointing Larry Kajowski, Ed Ditmer for reappointment, Mr. Dan Bragden, moving from alternate to permanent. Mr. Robin Worchester, moving to a permanent position on the board. And Mr. Mark Hope, moving to an alternate position on the board.
All right. Do I hear a second?
This is Commissioner Diorio. I second the motion.
All right. Would you state your vote, please?
More votes, I.
Kilby votes, I. Diorio, I.
Bryant, I.
All right, then those appointments pass unanimously. Thank you very much, Patrick. We'll, we'll go back then to kind of flipping around here. I apologize for that. Let's move on to the LAB.
Hey, Commissioner Kilby here. I will, let me get my pages turned here. So we currently have on the Lake Advisory Board, two of our members who are rotating their time and off and they're, they do want to be reappointed. And that is Sonya Ledford, who's currently a member, and David Lusk, who's currently a member. We have one more open position and we have can applications from Laura Doster, Brian Colley, Jeff Christensen, Crystal Morrison, Betty Ross and Bill Bay. And I would like to recommend that Bill Bay be the third person appointed to the Lake Advisory Board. Bill has been very active on the Board of Adjustments, Lake Structure Appeals Board. Bill is a resident in Lakewood Village Resort and his responsibilities on the board at Lakewood Village Resort. And his, his assignment is, is the boat slips, there's fifty-eight slips, coaster moorings in Lakewood Village Resort. And he's in charge of all that, all the assignments and on that. He's also in charge of the beach, the whole waterfront area. He's in charge of boat storage. So he's very close to that and in, in the Lakewood Village Resort. So I think he's the perfect person to be a representative on the Lake Advisory Board. So that's my, I would make that in form of a motion for Sonya Ledford, David Lusk and Bill Bay. And be happy to take any questions.
Excuse me, but you, you have two positions down there. Listen, it's opened. And, and that is Bill Bay and who else?
Really, there, I think there are three.
There's three, there's three openings.
Yeah, that's, there should be a, a third up there because we had Gary Johnson.
Yeah, Gary Johnson resigned. So there's three openings on the Board of Adjustment.
All right, that's, okay.
The Lake Advisory Board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, John made the motion and I'll, more will second it.
Thank you. Would you please state your vote?
More votes, I.
Then those recommendations, appointments stand, are approved unanimously. Okay, so this, does this have anything to do, this Bill Bay nomination with the nomination we were previously talking about?
Yes. We can go back to that now and approve that.
Yeah. So let's go back to, I believe that was you, Commissioner Bryant, was it not?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. Yes, Madam Mayor. Okay, reappointments. Number one, Mr. Neil Gurney. Number two, Mr. Al Joyner. Number three, Mr. Melvin Owensby. Based on LAB's recommendations and approval, Mr. Bill Bay rotates off. Mr. Greg Gardner becomes a permanent member of the Board of Adjustment and Lake Structures Appeals Board. And the recommendation was for Miss Betty Ross to become the alternate for that board. Also known as Julia E. Ross in the packet.
This is Diorio. I second the movement, the move.
All right. Would you please state your votes then for these appointments?
Mr. Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
Kilby, I.
All right, then the appointments are passed unanimously. Let's see who we have left here. That may be it.
No, UAB, ma'am.
Oh, UAB, yes, the hard, the hard one to fill.
Yeah.
Save the hard one till last. All right. Commissioner Diorio, would you like to take the UAB?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So UAB, there are two regular positions. There are currently two serving members, but latest information Clement Riddle, who was actually placed in interim position to replace me when I moved down to be a commissioner, has been overcome by events. He has not been involved at all since being appointed. The recommendation from the board and my recommendation as well is to have, replace Clement Riddle with Mr. Richard Sales, who has shown some interest in that. Mr. Sales is over at Grafton Lodge, very active. He's the type of person you'll see almost every town, every regular town council meeting. Very capable, very knowledgeable, has my highest recommendation. Now, the UAB was number six on his, on his priority list to, to get on a board. But he has not been on a board and I recommend that we start there. We'll approach him. This may be news to him, but we'll approach him. You have, you have him get on the board. If he prefers to move over at us, at us, to another board at, at a separate date, we can entertain that. But for, for this, for, at this time, I would nominate Richard Sales to fill Clement Riddle's position on the UAB. So I'm, I, we can go to discussion. Any questions?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I didn't make a motion, but I'll do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was.
I, I thought we were at the discussion. That's okay, John. I, I move that we place Richard Sales and Clement Riddle's position on the UAB.
Okay, Sales and Chapman, right?
Right, Sales and Chapman, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you seconding that, John?
Yeah.
All right. Would you all please state your vote?
Bryant, I.
Diorio, I.
More, I.
Kilby, I.
And Mr. Chapman and Mr. Sales are approved unanimously for the UAB. And I believe that is all the appointments that we have. Okay, that actually is the end of our board member appointments and the end of our unfinished business. So we will now move to our closed session. Do I hear a motion?
This is, this is Diorio. I move that we proceed to closed session in accordance with GS 143318. Point one one alpha six for the purpose of discussing personnel matters.
Commissioner Bryant, I will second the motion.
May I hear your votes, please?
Kilby, yes. More, yes.
Diorio, I.
Bryant, yes.
Then we will now move to closed session to discuss in open session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn our open session?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn the December regular town council meeting, Tuesday, December eighth.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Can we hear the vote, please?
Kilby, yes. More, yes.
Diorio, yes.
Who'd we miss?
Yes, I'm sorry. I made the motion. Bryant, yes, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick.
We were, we were ready for Frosty to make a motion, but.
There you go. I was calling him. Then we stand adjourned.